All right, let's see if we get up. Y'all up? Mark, you up yet?
I'm, uh, I'm a little slow.
Oh. We got one up.
We're, we're up.
We're up, okay. Good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, July 8th, 2025. It is now 10:00 a.m. in the morning. We're here for the regular session of the Hunt County Commissioners' Court Meeting. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order. And I'd ask that we have stand and have a moment of silence for all the people involved in the tragedy down in Kerr County, in Kerrville, in the, in the loss of life. And let's just have a moment of prayer and pray for all those lost loved ones and, um, and, and support. Let's pray and support the first responders and all that are still trying to mitigate this situation. Our most gracious heavenly Father, thank you for all of the things that you do for us. And Lord, we acknowledge you are the greatest power in the world and that you have the power over all of us. And Lord, we just ask you to give strength to the responders and those working to clear this tragedy. And especially, Father, reach down and touch those that lost loved ones or those that are dealing with loss of life and property as well. And just, Lord, heal them, help them heal, be with them. And Lord, we just ask you to be with us always and be with this county and be with those that are making decisions that we do it with the righteousness you require of us. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, today we have Commissioner Hutchins, Monroe, Smith, and Harrison present. I'm Judge Stovall will be presiding over the meeting today. Commissioners, you have the minutes from June 24th, 25 regular session. Entertainer motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number, or number four, minutes, uh, June 4th, 2025, special session. Entertain a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and we got motions in seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Uh, Commissioner, we got the minutes from June 26th, 25, special session. Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Minutes from June 27th, 2025, special session.
Make a motion, make a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we'll have public testimony. Speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. The Commissioners' Court cannot take action on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Concerns will be addressed by county staff and they may be placed on a future agenda or addressed by some other course of response. Y'all, y'all want to speak now? Both of y'all are on the solar farm? Would y'all like to speak when the item comes up or you can speak now?
That's fine, we can speak when the item comes up.
It's y'all's choice. We don't care. It's up to y'all. If y'all got to go somewhere or you want to stay.
Okay, we'll wait.
Okay, that's fine. Anybody else wanting to speak? We got anything online?
Uh, we got a few emails, but not online.
Okay, all right. All right, uh, me and Nun, I'll close the public testimony. Uh, we have no old business, new business consent calendar. Entertain a motion for approval of the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Uh, action item B, approval of counts payable?
Make a motion to approve payables?
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of line item transfers?
Make a motion to approve line item transfers?
Second.
Got a motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of budget amendments?
Make a motion to approve budget amendments?
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of payroll and personnel?
Make a motion to approve payroll and personnel?
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item one, the quarterly report for the Northeast Texas Children's Museum. Charlene? Welcome back.
Good morning. Our attendance in April, May, and June was about, was 14,468 for the second quarter. This gives us a yearly attendance at the end of June of 28,480. We had a variety of activities during the month of April. We had an Easter egg hunt. The alumni group from Kyle Magus at East Texas held an alumni event at our new Terry Taylor Room. We also hosted an adult Sunday School class from Highland Terrace Baptist Church. We also had Freedom Ace Bridge Day, which is a small fundraiser sponsored by her family. April was the month of our highest attendance with 5,940 visitors during the month of April. In May, we continued with large groups and 5,188 visitors. We began summer with a half price day and free multiball. And this was followed by a visit from the State Championship Commerce High School Robotics Team. They showed drones and let the children fly drones and showed them how to do it. This was followed by Dynorama and the museum had 278 visitors on that day. They came from 32 different cities and of cour- just to mention a few of those, Greenville had the most, followed by Suffer Springs, Perris, and Commerce. Other cities were Heath, Rockwall, Anna, Mount Pleasant, Sherman, Wiley, Quipment, Fay, Roy City, Fornie, and Richardson. Just to mention a few. And now we're looking forward to a Raptor show presented by the Blackland Prairie Raptor Center on July the 18th. And this will be followed by our very popular Spa Day on July the 25th. We also have a visit for Professor Pop, uh, who will be scheduled, who is scheduled for August the 1st. We're also trying to raise a little money with a raffle of a Nintendo Switch. Raffle tickets are $10. You could get a ticket online and the maximum tickets are 150. This Friday, we plan to donate all our children's admission fees to the Kerrville Salvation Army, uh, just in honor of children. So it's been a good quarter and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Charlene. Any questions? Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number two, quarterly report with Audie Murphy, Cotton Museum. Susan?
Good morning. Thank you all for letting me present our quarterly report today. Um, over the past three months, we have had visitors from, come from 35 different states and Puerto Rico. Internationally, they came from England, Japan, and Canada. There was a total of 1,394 paid visitors and a total of 2,004 people actually signed our guestbook. Our visitors spent 118 nights in local hotels, uh, which included Comfort Suites, Super 8, Motel 6, Hampton Inn, Holiday Inn, and Best Western. Um, our group chores came from, uh, Crockett Elementary, the second grade, Providence Academy, the fourth grade, uh, the Chamber Leadership Group, um, the fourth grade at Hind, Herndon Elementary in Roy City, uh, the fourth grade in Low Note Elementary, uh, the entire seventh grade in Greenville, which was awesome to have all them come. Um, it was over, it was like around 250 kids, uh, over a few days. Um, the Antique Car Club, uh, the League of Riders out of Carrollton, um, Briar Cliff came, and a group from DOD, the Defense Contract Management Agency also came and visited. So that was really interesting and cool, uh, to talk to them. Um, our lunch break speakers included, uh, in April, Colonel Mark Tarpley talked about the Air Force in Vietnam. In May, author Rusty Williams spoke about his latest book, Texas Loud, Proud, and Brash: How Ten Mavericks Created the 20th Century Lone Star State. And in June, Dr. Diana Mason gave a presentation on the First Texian Navy. And we also had a World War II Roundtable program where Adam Seep talked about, uh, GIs, Germans, and the ends of war from 1944 to 1946. In April, we had our adults-only Easter egg hunt. And in May, we held Audi Day and had a great program with, uh, a wonderful turnout. On Friday, we showed the movie Ride Clear, Diablo at the Texan Theater. And then on Saturday, Terrence Ferguson spoke about the North American Aviation Plant during World War II. And Seth Perdon, who is host of a really popular podcast called The Unauthorized History of the Pacific Corps, talked about Admiral Nimitz's island-topping campaign. Uh, we also did a Zoom Q and A with Keith Kent McCord, who knew Audi and is best known for his role in Adam 12, if any of you guys ever watched that, um, uh, a while ago. Um, we also hosted, um, our Muntzi at the museum in May. And in June, we held our first museum murder mystery, uh, event, which we did like a live-action game of Clue, and we sold out on our tickets. So we're really looking forward to having another one next year. And I'm going to do my best to make it even harder than the one I did this year. And, um, we also, in June, we celebrated what would have been Audie Murphy's 100th birthday if he was still alive. So we had actor Duffy Hudson, he performed a one-man show of Audi, um, to a sellout crowd, uh, full house. We had around 80 people attend that, so that was great at the museum. For our movie nights, we showed Mr. Moto's Gamble starring Peter Laurie and Seven Brides for Seven Brothers starring Jane Powell. And we also installed a new temporary exhibit of Audie Murphy artifacts that are not usually on display. If anybody has any questions, be glad to answer.
Any questions?
I'm just sorry you didn't let my wife know about Seven Brides for Seven Brothers, so I wouldn't have to watch it one more time.
All right, Commissioner, entertain a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number three, the Treasurers' Monthly Report for May 2025. Brittany?
Good morning. Uh, in your package, you will have the Treasurers' Report for Month End, May 31, 2025. We have a month-end balance of $66,285,214.60. That's in cash and bank and invested funds. All of the bank reconciliations have been balanced and the auditors and treasurers books do agree. Do you have any questions?
Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number four, order for dispersment of salaries payable prior to Commissioners' Court approval. Brittany?
Yes, sir, thank you again. Um, what you have, uh, before you is an order for dispersment for salaries and routine office expenses. Uh, currently, we are paying, um, every other Friday after Commissioners' Court, we call it our mini payables. Um, we are operating off of an order, or not actually an order, just an action item that was approved through the court in October of 2011. So, which three of the, you know, five members of that court are not even alive anymore. And so it's just something that, um, we, uh, and that, at that time, it was for anything that would incur a late fee. Uh, in 2019, the legislative session approved, um, that, uh, provided that county funds previously budgeted for salaries authorized office expenditures, may be dispersed as payment for a salary or routine expense, um, prior to Commissioners' Court approval. We're currently doing this, this just puts everything in writing. And it gives a very specific outlay of what would be approved, uh, prior to court. Cause according to the local government code, I'm not allowed to disperse any payments without your approval, which is normally on Tuesdays 10:00 a.m. And so if we have anything that's in there, which it falls under those, uh, five things that we have there, we're, we pay them ahead of time to either not, uh, have a late fee or, like I said, our credit card is auto-drafted out of the bank account. It always has been, but it gives us the authority to do that ahead of time, uh, as well as, number one, shows payroll expenses, which would be salaries, insurances, anything like that. But it just kind of puts everything in writing, so it covers it to say that you, as the court, allow me to do that ahead of your approval. And then you would still get a list of, a register list of what we did that prior Friday at the next regular session.
Okay, any questions? Mary, you good? Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Oh, it does?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Uh, all right, we need to have a roll call vote. Uh, Commissioner Hutchins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Um, Monroe?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harrison?
Aye.
Judge Stovall votes aye. Passes unanimously, twice. Uh, action item six, Hunt County Fraud, Waste, and Abuse Policy. Aaron, you gonna? Oh, we did? Oh, excuse me. The sheriff and constable, uh, action item five, the sheriff and constable fee with no changes from last year. Any questions? Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now, action item six, Hunt County Fraud, Waste, and Abuse Policy. Aaron, sorry I tricked you on that one.
I don't have anything big to say on this one. This is essentially a policy that the county needs to have in place, uh, to make it eligible for a lot of the grants that the county goes out for. Uh, probably has meant something that's been needed in the past, but not necessarily due to any fraud or waste or something that's been investigated or found to be. But it's the fact that we just didn't have a policy enacted on the books that's a requirement for application in, uh, using some of these grants.
Grant works caught that for us, didn't they?
Correct.
Yeah, grant works caught it during their processes for us, so. Any questions?
Just curious, have, do you, do we believe we've been denied any grants in the past because we didn't have it? Just curiosity question.
Not that I'm aware of, no.
And, and this is a county-wide policy, so it applies to all departments?
Correct.
And it will there, will we need to be do, will we need to provide training to our employees on this?
Without reviewing it further, I don't believe so. I don't, I don't recall seeing that is, uh, in my cursory review of the policy, uh, essentially just be on the books and, and they'll have a county-wide policy for the future.
Will every employee need to sign off that they've received a copy of this and?
It, to the extent it would be added as part of an employee handbook.
All right, thank you.
Will you check on that and make sure if we got it and get it in the right place? All right. We approve that? Entertain a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number seven, a resolution for county to participate in 2025 Election Security HAVA subgrant. Jeanne is going to leave this with me, I think. This first ever, we just discovered this grant that is a federal grant and it, uh, gives us money to help protect the ballots and protect the voting, uh, to make sure there were, nothing's being done incorrectly or whatever. So it gives us some funding to hire extra people or buy equipment, if I remember correctly. You know a lot more about it than I do, sorry.
Is this about storage? Is this about how we store, you know, whether it's electronic or physical or?
Let the expert tell us.
Expert. This is a reimbursement grant from the Secretary of State. And it's made possible through HAVA, which is the Help America Vote Act. The grant helps cover compliance efforts in relation to the paper ballot audit trail requirements. Um, so the audit trail requirements are that we have to have an auditable paper trail, meaning that everyone has to get a paper ballot and that has, that can be audited, okay? Um, also, it covers installation of security surveillance. Currently, Hunt County does not fall under the security surveillance requirements because that's for populations over 100,000. We were forty-some, forty-six short of the 100,000, so we're good there. Um, we can also use it to upgrade IT systems and services as well as replace some of the decommissioned, uh, electronic pole pads. So, um, the, the resolution is just a reporting requirement of the grant.
Okay, any questions?
Jeanne, are we just applying, is this all, is money that's already available to us and we just need to pass the resolution, have matching funds?
It is, so, um, the, the, uh, requirements for our county, we actually fell into the hun- under 100,000, which, um, allows us to get about 42, 42,500. Um, there's a 20% match of 8,500.
Which we've already spent.
Oh, well over that, yes, sir.
Yeah, so we already spent it, we're not spending new money.
No, we're not.
It's, because it's reimbursement, it's reimbursement of money we already spent, and we spend a lot more money than that, so.
Yep, and, and with the match, is that in the budget or will we need to include that in our next year budget or?
We should be able to cover it. Um, we have Senate Bill 2753 is actually the Senate bill that we're watching. Um, and that one has a lot of changes to, to the requirements for, um, elections. So I don't know what it's going to cost. Um, we're just going to have to wait until the Secretary of State comes and implements the rules and procedures for us to follow. Uh, Secretary of State Nelson has said that she will not rule that, she will not say that the policies and procedures go into place for implementation until she's confident that all 254 EAs or county clerks are able to comply. So, um, it could be the next election, not November, but probably the primary, which I don't, I personally don't see happening. That's a lot of implementation. Um, but it could be as early as next November, which would require us to find some funds to comply. I don't know.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jeanne, curiosity, because I know you enjoy this.
I do.
So 42,000 is what we qualify for today at our size. If we were to go ahead and upgrade, since we know we're already beyond that, upgrade to the next level, could we get to the next level of grant even though we're not officially over 100,000?
We can't, no, no.
So there's no incentive for us to move out?
No, no.
Most everything in government, as far as salary, or as far as population, it's said at the, at the census track year.
Yeah, just even in this scenario, it, it.
And it'd help us, yes, yeah, it would.
We can well exceed the 42.5, uh, balance, but we, we can't get any more at this time.
There are some exceptions, I, you know, some cities have some, they can go out and challenge the census and go do their own, uh, uh, teamwork, the work to figure out if they really miss people or not in the count of the census. And they can change their population. City of Greenville did it once years ago. Farmersville did it three years ago, something like that, two, three years ago. Farmersville changed theirs up to over 5,000 population and the census had them like at 2,500. So they could go to a home rural city form of government, I think, is what they did. So it's, uh.
So let me remind you, at least in the elections field, if we were to try to challenge that census, um, that would actually cost us more in the long run because then we would have to, uh, install security surveillance where we keep our voted balance. Currently, they're under lock and key and we have everything sealed with a chain of custody. Um, once we hit that 100,000 population, uh, population, then we'll have to put it under surveillance.
And challenging.
It's in our interest to stay where we're at, as long as we can.
I would be heard it.
And the challenge is expensive also, because you got to hire outside people to go do the recount.
Sure, I'd wait about seven years.
Good advice.
Thanks. You don't have to take it, I.
All right.
Other questions?
Any other questions? Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number eight, enter local agreement with Rockwell County regarding jail overflow housing. Aaron, or Sheriff here? Sheriff Buddy, or Chad, you want? Yeah, let Chad. Yeah. Morning, Chad.
Good morning, sir. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Chad Stroud, jail administrator. Uh, I'm just trying to get ahead of this right now. I can house 339 inmates, that's how many beds I have. My population this morning was 334.
Woo!
So we're right at that mark. And if I go over that mark, I have to start housing out or we're going to start getting in trouble with the state and the jail commission. I've reached out to Rockwell County and with an, in a local agreement, they said that they could, uh, house at least 20 inmates at this time if we need to. I'm hoping we don't have to utilize it and I can get the number, we can get the numbers back down. But if we do, I need somewhere to be able to send these inmates. I've reached out to Kaufman, Hopkins, uh, they may can take one or two here or there, but it's going to be hit or miss. Uh, we're currently, right now, we are, uh, anybody that's out of county for out-of-county warrant that gets arrested, I mean, I'm delivering them to that county if we can, if it's feasible. So that's.
Not waiting for them to come pick them up, huh?
Correct. I'm just trying to keep that number below that 339, but we are getting close. And I don't know if that's due to, uh, the growth in the county or what's that? Because we're seeing a lot of new faces. Uh, as far as people that were holding for TDC, I've got about 20 that are waiting to go to TDC. And those are, you know, 45 days, they're all under 45 days, so they're new sentenced individuals. TDC's been moving pretty quickly, you know, to come and get them, so.
Better than they used to, I hope.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, because what happens if they go over the 45 days now, they start reimbursing the county for us housing them.
If it goes over 30, we can, uh, add that into the calculations for tax rates, too.
Yes, sir. So, uh, we, again, we're looking to try to get into this in a local agreement with, uh, Rockwell County to just give me that relief if I need it. I don't want to have to use it, I'm going to try everything we can not to.
We got, we were certified to, what, 367 or 370?
Or what's on record with the state's 345 beds.
345, okay.
Now, we used to have more when we had the annex.
Annex, that's right, that's where the other number came from, yeah.
But that got decommissioned.
Right.
So we got 345 and out of the 345, I've got 339 beds that are usable.
Right. And those that aren't usable is because of the building moving and the doors don't work right and.
Correct, yes, sir. We got some cells with some issues.
And that's a, that's a kind of a rotating deal, and we fix them and then they get rotated and they're back in service and then another one fails and.
It does.
Yeah. It's a mess.
So curious about the annex, when it got decommissioned, is it something that can be brought back or is it significant investment to go?
That would be a significant investment because we had generator issues, uh, was a big part of the reason why we decommissioned it. Plus, it can only house the minimum inmates, minimum custody.
Now, Gary, that was during a jail inspection, they got that our, our automatic turn-on of the backup generator was supposed to be in three seconds or something, or five seconds, and it was twice that, it was like 10 seconds. So we were going to spend tens of thousands of dollars getting a new generator. And at the time, we didn't have any space issues.
Correct.
We had plenty of room in the jail and all, so instead of spending the additional money, we chose just to let it go.
Right decision at that moment in time.
At that moment in time, it was the right decision. That's been five years ago, six years ago.
Yes, sir.
Quite a while.
And so you're, sorry, go ahead. I was, I was just curious, so it was $105 a night at Rockwell?
Yes, sir.
And, and what, what does our estimated cost per day?
We're, for us, we're right at, I believe, around 80.
80, so it's not as significant?
It's not as significant, no, sir.
But the state reimburses us at 45, I think, don't they?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, they're kind to us. They pay us half of what it's costing us.
Uh, how many of the minimum security inmates do we have? I don't know, it's a fluctuating number, but.
Yeah, I don't, I'd have to, I'm not sure on that, how many we have, uh, out of the total population. I don't have that number in front of me, but I can get it.
Sure, that'd be great.
Any other questions?
And, so, so just to help me understand the process, when we put this in agreement in place, then if we reach capacity and have, you know, too, too many, are you, you're able to just call them up, say, hey, I'm coming, coming your way?
Yes, uh, and that's going to be if they have the space available as well. We may run into an issue if they get overcrowded over there, uh, it'll be to where they say, no, we can't take any at this time.
Sure, um, and, uh, so where, so from a financial standpoint, it's 100. Sure. Um, and, uh, so where, so from a financial standpoint, it's 105 a day?
Yes, sir.
Would, would be 105 a day. What, what line item budget does that come out of?
We do have a out-of-county and, um, and car, I, I don't have the number in front of me, but we currently have $7,500 in that line item is what we have. So, it would not last very long if this went very long, if they had to stay over there at a long period of time.
But, but there's some, at least something in there to-
There is a little bit. Mark, are you reading off your phone?
I've got my, my tablet here.
So, where are those questions coming from? You're reading off of it, so who's sending you?
I, I've got the agreement pulled up in front of me.
Okay.
It was emailed out to us. That, that was all I had to ask. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chad.
Yes, sir.
So, you already have money, 7,500 budgeted if you had to do this, so you potentially could take a little over 7,000 days that you already have budgeted for right now?
For one, for one body?
Yeah.
And that's going, I mean, it's gonna be 100 per person per day?
Yeah.
105, wouldn't it?
So, 105, yes, sir. So, you're looking at, you know, if you had, if they took 20 inmates, yeah, times 105-
Yeah, over 2,000.
-per each day.
Yeah.
It's gonna go quick.
Yeah.
We're just paying for it in a different way. If we're here, they were still costing us, so.
Yes, sir.
It shouldn't affect the budget that bad.
Right.
We may have to readjust some line items or something.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Do you have any compliance limitations that says you can't actually be 100% full? You have to be 95% full in case of X, Y, or Z?
No, sir. It's, if we just hit that number and go over the, that minimum bed capacity, then we've got to start finding the place for them to stay.
Got you. Thanks.
And everybody's looking for space.
They are. It's, I'm thankful, Rockwall, when I talked to them, uh, last week, they had 20 beds available right now, and they were willing to help us even before this agreement came into place. So, I was very thankful for that, in case something happened over the Fourth of July.
It's good to have good neighbors.
It is. We hit, uh, last week, we hit 339 one day, and then it went down to 335 by the end of the day with people getting out.
Thank you for being proactive instead of reactive.
Yes, thank you.
So, we can get ahead. Yes, sir. I don't want us getting in trouble with the state.
I don't, no. We've been there before, haven't we, Chad?
Yes, sir. If I can prevent that and, and keep that going, that's what I wanna do.
Anything else? Thank you, Chad.
Yes, sir.
Entertaining motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item nine, resolution adopting cellular service tax and granting authority to complete documents with Texas Comptroller. Uh, I'll start with this, Aaron, and then you can follow up. I went to a meeting in Sulphur Springs of some, uh, county judges out of East Texas, and the Delta County judge brought it to all our attention that he was one of the only county, I think there was one other county that had filed with the Comptroller for collection of sales tax on your cellphone bill. So, I came back and looked at my cellphone bill, and it's got a Hunt County tax on it. But on the, on the Comptroller site, it says we're not, we're not collecting for cellular service taxes. So, we're trying to figure out if we've got money sitting, sitting down there and they're collecting it. My, I got an AT&amp;T. I don't know if other people have got AT&amp;Ts. They'll look at their bill and see, but it, it's collecting county sales tax on mine. So, I don't know if we got money sitting out there, or we got money we could get that's already being charged or should have been being charged. So, that's what we asked Daniel. I called trying to get it worked out, and I got in that phone chase where they said, "Well, transfer it here and transfer you here," and then it went dead. I did that a couple of times. I called Daniel Ray, and I said, "You got a direct line into that place somewhere where we can get to it?" So, I asked Daniel to start digging into it and see if he could find us an answer for it. So, Aaron, if you'll brief us on what y'all figured out so far.
I didn't get an answer. Didn't get to sign that question. Uh, we did draft up the resolution allowing for it. Like I said, that, that is the, what we're surmising is that the state is collecting it, and it's, uh, it's just sitting down there in a big pot of money, uh, and the county's not getting reverse. I think it was Hopkins County is the one county in East Texas that is currently collecting it.
No, Delta, Delta for sure is, and Hopkins might be.
Yeah.
Because there was one other there, and I don't remember who.
One other one is, is the Hopkins.
Yeah.
Uh, and all the other counties are not, whereas most of the cities are.
Yeah, like Greenville's on it, and I think some of the other smaller cities are on the list at the Comptroller.
Correct. Rockwall as well. City of Rockwall was-
Right. Well, and I think Lone Oak and Commerce and Quineland might have been on it also.
I don't have a definitive answer on exactly how that's working, is where, if the money's being collected from, uh, obviously from the bills and held at the state level, uh, but we do have a resolution for you to review and pass. It's been sent out to you.
Okay, so that's what we're trying to figure out.
It's an existing tax that's already applied. People are paying it.
Correct.
So, it's nothing new. It's us just trying to get the money back into the county that, that has been taxed for already.
Well, that's, that's my, that's our belief. We're just trying to confirm.
Yeah, I'm just making sure.
Now, we've got a service that I have, we hadn't had a chance to get to them yet to see if they break it down. Mary, I don't know, do you know if they break it down? It's just the amount of sales tax, I think, isn't it? They don't break it down. Do you remember? Are you looking it up?
Mary, I think he's talking.
Mary?
So-
Did you hear me? Are you looking it up for us, sir?
I don't have the exact number.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. All right. Uh, but if we can look, if we can look at that service and see if it's showing, if we got anything from any of the cell services, if they give, if they break it down that way. I don't remember in that report. Uh, all right. Anything else?
So, Aaron, I'm sorry, did y'all, were y'all able to make contact with the Secretary of-
It's Comptroller.
Comptroller.
I did not work on this memo. I think, uh, Arnold Lucian in the office did, and I'm not sure if he made contact with them or not.
How confident we're not gonna accidentally trigger a new tax if we, if we do this?
I'd find out and get back to you on that.
All right. If, it seems like a no-brainer if it's already being collected, and we just need to fill out some paperwork to have some of it sent back our way.
Right. If you could approve a contingent on that, on confirming that, if you wanted to approve that and do a motion contingent upon confirming that it is not a new tax, we could always-
Well, what if, what if it's, well, I, we already know it is on my bill. So, if it's, are we gonna, if Mobile, T-Mobile's not collecting it, then, I mean, what do we, what are we gonna do there? I mean, if it's already being collected by some of them, not collected by others, we're gonna have to get consistent and, I guess, bring it back and based on what we find?
Yeah, I, I just, I would like to understand kind of the, the mechanism of how it works prior to a final vote, but it seems like a great, great thing.
Add its old business.
Just don't want to create a new tax.
Right.
It seems like it's already there, but.
And Mary, that, that's not a, a line item, you know, I'm still learning on the budget side. In our, in our revenue feeds, it's not even a line item.
Total sales tax is.
Total sales tax is?
But it's not broken down, but where it comes from.
So, it would just fall into that bucket?
Right. Okay, keep, keep trying, keep trying to figure it out. All right, action item 10, solar farm lease contract between Hunt County and Greenville LLC. Aaron, are you want solar people to go first, or?
I didn't make that public comment first, I guess.
Well, let's let, let's do our presentation and then let them comment after, if that's okay. Because some questions might get answered. Okay. All right, so, y'all wanna start, or?
Good morning, everybody. Uh, my name is Trevor Hand. I'm, uh, I'm with a company called SunGrid Power, and, uh, we work alongside, uh, Juice, um, to help facilitate a project called Project Sunshine. And, uh, Project Sunshine is intended to, uh, to develop local, uh, renewable energy resources at a low cost for Hunt County residents and Greenville residences. Um, this is a project that's been in the works, uh, for a number of years now, and, um, we, as a, as an organization, as a company, were, uh, went through a, an RFP process, um, that took, uh, well over a year, and a number of companies, um, responded to that RFP, and we were successful in, uh, in winning, um, the, the project to develop, um, local solar facilities for, uh, for Juice. Um, in, in question today is a, um, is a lease agreement, um, for a small piece of land, uh, on Putten Hill, right beside the water treatment, uh, location. And, um, this, this location has been intentionally chosen because, uh, currently it, uh, it is on the edge of a floodplain. It cannot be utilized for any other development purposes. Um, you know, because of the, the nature of the floodplain, you can't construct other, uh, facilities, uh, on that property. And, um, it's an ideal location for, uh, for what we're trying to do in terms of a small, uh, solar facility. So, when I say small, we're talking about, uh, probably the na- the nature of, uh, 12 to 14 acres. Um, we'll know the final size once we get, uh, a survey, surveyor in there to, to determine the, the area. Um, we believe this is a, uh, an ideal location for this project, because, as I said, it's in a floodplain. Uh, it's in a non-populated area. There's no residential, um, dwellings in, in that area. And, uh, and currently, um, you know, we believe it's a, it's a county-owned piece of property. There's no tax revenue related to this property as it currently stands. Uh, the proposed solution will be a small, local distributed solar facility that provides a number of benefits. So, number one, it's gonna provide local reliable, uh, renewable energy sources, uh, for, for Juice. It's gonna be, um, provide that energy at a, at a lower cost, um, over a long period of time. It's also gonna help to generate, um, tax revenue for the county, uh, via property taxes, as well as business personal property taxes, to the nature of tens of thousands of dollars, uh, every year. And, uh, and the land, um, we're, we're looking for a, uh, 25-year lease, um, and, uh, you know, at the end of that term, the land, the nature of solar facilities can be returned back to its original form, very simply, very easily, by removing the, uh, the steel structures from the ground and returning the land back to its original, uh, purpose.
If I remember, you said at one of the meetings that if being in floodplain, you'd probably have it built up on a pedestal that would be up above any floodwater. Is that correct? Is that, am I remembering that right?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Yeah, so, everything will be above the ground. Um, it's very common practice for solar facilities to be built in floodplains. Um, you know, it's often considered a, uh, an ideal location for them, because the land can otherwise not be used for, for much else. Um, you know, there, just to address some concerns, um, we've, we've addressed these separately, but in terms of any kind of environmental, uh, concerns, um, the, the solar panels that, uh, would be used for this purpose would be, you know, polysilicon solar panels. Uh, they do not present any environmental risk. Um, the primary, uh, material within these solar panels is, is silicon, you know, which is, just for those who recall back to, to high school, so it's a, you know, it's a naturally occurring element. It's element number 14, it's silicon. And, uh, what happens if, if for some reason that solar panel were, uh, to become damaged, um, that is a naturally occurring element, and it does not present any environmental hazard to, uh, to the, the local area. So, you know, sometimes people get confused, because there's a different type of solar panel technology that's called a thin film technology and has cadmium telluride in it, and if that was to, to get damaged, then that could leak, uh, and, and leach into the ground. We do not use that type of, uh, of technology. Um, so, number one, there's no environmental risk to the area, uh, in terms of if, if those panels were to be damaged. Uh, number two, you know, as a company, we, uh, utilize the most, you know, the biggest risk is hail. So, the most hail-resistant solar panels on the marketplace. The panels that we utilize, um, can withstand a two-inch hail ball, um, and it's, they're designed to, to not crack or get damaged with, with that. Um, furthermore, we do have a number, three other solar facilities within the area. Uh, they've been up and running for, for over three years. We have about 20,000 solar panels, and over that duration of time, we've had a number of, uh, of hailstorms, and we've only had to ever replace one solar panel. And we didn't really even have to replace it. There was a small crack, and we thought it's probably best to replace it. So, you know, not only does the technology itself is not, um, present any risk to the environment, our approach to, you know, designing the systems with the most hail-resistant, uh, panels increased that, uh, or reduced that risk even further. Um, in addition to that, we have a local team here in Wieland that, uh, that we utilize to maintain the solar facilities. We're on these sites, you know, every week or every second week, constantly inspecting these sites. So, if we did find, um, there was a potential risk, we would address that risk immediately. Um, another layer of, of risk management, um, is that, you know, we have, uh, our own construction team, and, uh, we build solar facilities. We're based here. Um, we've got property here in Hunt County. We're based here in Texas, but we do build solar facilities across the United States, and, uh, we have a large team of, of 80-plus people. So, if we ever did need to do any kind of remediation, we have the people to do quick work to, to replace that, or to do any repairs as necessary. Um, so hopefully that addresses any, any concerns out there in terms of any environmental risk or ability for us to maintain and, and manage the facilities.
Well, we've had one other that I'd like for you to address. I think we talked about it at another meeting. Since we had, you haven't been on the ground, you hadn't surveyed it. The floodplain is just a overlay of a federal government FEMA map over on top of what is the local tax parcel district map. So, when you're doing your survey work, and if you find out that that is incorrect and it could get feet of water onto that area, then that you probably would not use it or could not use it, or you would go ahead and just build up your platforms taller?
Yeah, thank you. Good question. So, um, yeah, the first step would be to bring in, uh, a proper survey to survey the area that would be the ideal location for this facility. Um, you know, right now, we're currently looking right near adjacent to the water treatment plant at the lower end of, of Putten Hill there. Um, but a survey would come in and, and properly survey the area and determine how much of that area potentially is in the floodplain. And, uh, yeah, at the very least, the panels are gonna be built four or five feet off the ground, so they'll, they're gonna be well out of the, uh, the risk of any kind of water. Um, but we will ensure that the electrical design, the foundational design, um, is designed to, um, to ensure that the, there's no risk for the panels being anywhere near the, the floodplain. And any of the other, we call it conversion equipment in terms of the inverters, um, that'll be built up, uh, out of the floodplain and up on a platform. So, um, but your question, if it's determined by the surveyor that, "Hey, the floodplain is a little bit higher," we'll adjust the design and making sure it's, it's-
It might come up further on our property, or it might be further-
No, I, I think we'll, I think we'll just raise it up a little bit higher.
Right.
So, maybe six inches.
But again, you'd have more room if that map was wrong, and the water did come higher. It'd come higher on our ground, which you could have a bigger area then to work with to move up.
Yes, correct. If, if that's permissible by, by the, by the county. But when I say move up, I'm, I'm saying, you know, literally the, the vertical height of the solar panels may go up by four inches or six inches.
Right.
So, we'll get taller piles that go into the ground.
Right.
Um, so, just raise the, the panels up slightly, um, in the event that, that that's a, that's, that's a concern.
So, I was going through the contract quickly, so certainly not an expert at everything that's in there, but tried to get familiar with it. So, Aaron, I don't recall anything in the language in there either way that, that addresses that. Uh, you know, that there'll be a study done, there'll be an analysis put in there that it's not, I don't see it as a requirement in the contract or a milestone for next steps, or where you would report back to the court on anything like that.
Yes. No, it's a good question. So, uh, Daniel Ray and I have, uh, worked through that, and I'm not sure when you look, worked through the contract, but yesterday-
Last night, yeah.
Oh, last night, okay. So, there is, um, in, within the lease agreement, there is, um, you know, it's, uh, there is language that speaks to the fact that we need to do a survey. We need to do the initial investigative work. So, we'll do a survey. We'll use some geotech to really understand the, uh, the, the, the ground, the environmental conditions within that location. We'll do all that preliminary work, and then we'll determine the, um, the ideal locations, the meets and bounds. And what, um, the county attorney, Dan, Daniel Ray, and we discussed and agreed to is that we would return back to the, the, um, the court to finalize the meets and bounds of the final location of the facility.
Before you go forward?
For your approval, correct. Yes, sir.
So, is that one of the things you'd be doing first in the project?
Correct, yeah. The first, you know, what, what, um, what we're looking for today is, um, is approval that we can, you know, proceed on doing, you know, on this location, and we can proceed on doing the investigative work in terms of the survey work, the geotech work, and that'll give us more information to make, uh, more informed decisions and make sure that we're, you know, we're, we're protecting everyone's interests in mind in terms of location, environmental concerns, everything else.
But, Aaron, that, that language, you need to be a little more clear, because it didn't jump off the page at me. Um, just out of curiosity, just from a lack of knowledge. So, if you have to raise your panels up because the floodplain is, is identified, oh, it's actually a foot higher than what we thought? actually a foot higher than what we thought, is there not a stability issue at some point in the conversation as you raise those?
No. So what, what would happen? I'm not saying we're going to raise it eight to 10 feet. Mind you, there are solar facilities out there that have them very high and, and they're intentionally designed that way for other purposes in terms of they want livestock underneath them and, and other, other purposes. So the engineering can certainly, uh, accommodate that. What I'm saying, raise it up, you know, my, my assumption based on, um, you know, work we do in this area and other areas is that, you know, we're talking maybe an extra six inches, maybe eight inches. And what that would require is just a, a slightly, um, different design in terms of the, the steel, uh, W9 beam that will go into the ground. Either it's slightly longer or it's a little bit heavier gauge steel to withstand the impacts of a, of a higher, uh, panel above the ground.
But you do that on every panel, not just because of this one?
Correct. Yeah. You know, so we do, um, full engineering studies. So we call them foundational studies. So we'll do a full study incorporating the, um, the weather of this area, um, the potential, uh, risks for, for all the various weather conditions and, and wind and whatnot. And we'll design that to, to withstand that.
And you have experience?
Yes, we have a lot of experience. So, uh, we certainly, uh, as I mentioned, we do this all across, uh, yeah, yeah, we all across the U.S., but, uh, we, we do have experience in Hunt County doing this work as well. We have three other locations that, uh, uh, we built back in 2021 and 2022.
So I, I know it's hard because everywhere you go, you get darts thrown at you. So one of the things I was, as I was going through in the contract that we didn't discuss, you know, the prior meetings, you know, when we, when you talk about environmental, we addressed the solar panels. Thank you for, for that information. But, you know, the thing that gets everybody excited always the, is the lithium ion batteries. I didn't see anything that talked about, is there going to be a storage facility here?
No, sir. So this is just purely, uh, solar. So there's no lithium ion batteries as part of this plan.
Okay. Thank you.
I've got a question. So just so I understand this correctly. So Greenville Solar LLC will own the solar panels and you're wanting to just lease the property from the county at whatever rate, a dollar a year or whatever? And then you're going to sell energy to Juice, which then they will be able to lower their rates to all the customers in Greenville. Is that correct?
Just in their service area, they go outside of Green, the city of Greenville.
Yes, we serve a 97 square mile, uh, area in Hunt County.
And Greenville's 35 square miles or something like.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three square miles.
And so if you put this in and then the county will start getting, because we'll charge you tax on that, on that solar farm there. And are you asking, I don't remember, I'm sorry, if this has been answered, but what kind of tax abatement are you asking for? Is it a hundred percent or?
No, no, no tax abatement.
So you'd be paying a hundred percent property tax on it?
Correct.
Yeah, that was one of the criteria that we evaluated on when we issued the RFP. Um, and actually SunGrid was the only supplier that, that did not, um, that, that agreed to not ask for tax abatement. So that was a, one of the deciding factors in selecting them. So the reason, excuse me, the reason we're approaching the county is, um, you know, we, we tried to find, uh, entities that we could partner with on this to, to keep the cost as low as possible, um, so that we can roll out the, the greatest benefit, um, to the community. As a community-owned utility, um, we don't profit, um, we simply pass through cost. And so, um, our goal was to secure as, as many of these sites as we could at low or no cost to keep the cost of the ultimate project down. And the reason behind us, uh, pursuing this local solar project was demand from some of the largest employers in Hunt County, uh, who have corporate mandates to meet, uh, renewable energy goals. Um, and, you know, trying to find the best, most cost-effective way to meet those, help them meet those goals and, uh, just being able to offer a program to local citizens that want renewable energy. Um, for some of our customers, that, that's a key priority for them. And this is a way that we're trying to do it in the most cost-effective manner and in the long term as part of a larger strategic, um, initiative to lower cost in other ways for the utility. So just to share that background.
And y'all are truly another government entity because you're part of the city of Greenville. So it's really a government entity that, that you'll be dealing with. Um, and I think in the past, y'all, if one of you have said that this is, we use mostly during peak times when there's high demand. Can you explain to the public how, I mean, I've been on the board, so I, I've kind of got a leg up with how the rates can fluctuate or the, what we pay for electricity if we don't have electricity already bought up, what those differentials can go to and what the cost of, of a megawatt is now or?
Sure. So the current market cap is $5,000 a megawatt. Um, we're looking at, uh, our agreement with SunGrid, we're looking to achieve 10 megawatts of local solar. Our system peak is about 127 megawatts right now. Um, I expect that to go up this year. Um, actually, we peaked in the winter last year. Interesting flip there in Texas. But, um, yes, so we, we, um, supply energy through a variety of different, uh, products. Uh, we do long-term fixed price agreements for power. We have local generation. We do have some large-scale renewable energy agreements. Um, but we, we strive to lock in the bulk of our cost into a fixed price. So we're not exposed to that potential for $5,000 a megawatt. Um, in the summer, it's not uncommon to see those prices top $500. Um, and when you're supplying 127 megawatts, uh, every hour, um, paying that much per megawatt is, is, you know, an astronomical cost. And so, um, this would be a fixed price throughout the project. Um, it helps us shave our peak, uh, energy in the summer and will also help us in the winter when we have gas curtailment at our local generation facility. So, um, it, it's a way to hedge, um, some of the risks that we have in price and supply, uh, on top of the benefits that we can offer, um, to our customers who, who need that type or want that type of energy.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Unfortunately, probably more than you want. So.
I'll be quiet next time.
Well, so, so I'm with you. So early on, you, you, you stated many of those things. And so the premise that I had based a lot of my belief system on, like a lot of people, not, not the, uh, number one fan for so, for solar, not anti-anti, but never been the, the front runner for you. But in matter of fact, two times this year, we've already voted no, uh, you know, against a couple of others. The, the pretense here for me that made this a, 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 a good stool to sit on was benefits of local utility, keyword local, right? Helps some, some local businesses and, and corporate, you know, they get credits for it. And then it was going to protect some, some rate during peak times for, for, for the taxpayer. So those are all good reasons. Then the, the typical things, uh, the environmental concerns, the aesthetic concerns certainly, you know, were, were, were mitigated in this particular scenario. So it was much more open-minded. The, the thing that, whenever I opened the contract last night, uh, it took away one of my stools, uh, one of the legs on the stool, is that it's with a company called Greenville Solar LLC. So it's, it's obviously a subsidiary of, of SunBridge. It's not Juice. And so one of the big things for me is if there was an environmental concern, if there was a catastrophe, if there was, uh, you know, 10 years from now or 20 years from now and there are decisions made to not go forward with, with that farm and it, and it has to be torn down, is any, any of those scenarios that would exist along the way, Juice being part of the community would be arm-in-arm with us to go fix something, to go improve something, to go change something. And, and so that was one of the things that took a stool away from me when I realized, because I, maybe I misunderstood along the way because I was thinking that we were going to be contracting with Juice in this conversation. And so, uh, Aaron, I, I know I'm kind of getting over into your piece of this conversation, but is that, is that a, a, a potential here to flip the relationship as far as who we're working with?
Maybe I can, I can just comment on that. I think, um, you know, it's, it's a very, very good question and I think it's a, it's a question that we hear often. Um, and I would say that the standard practice across, across the United States is to have a separate LLC, um, for every location. The reason why that happens is because there's, there's very specific financing that is required to, uh, to, to finance the, the, the equipment and the construction of that particular facility. So that's why it's, it's structured under that way. The way that, um, you know, the, the county and, and Juice is protected, um, by way of an agreement is there, you know, with, within the, uh, the agreement that, that we have with, um, with, with Juice, it ensures that we have to make sure that there's, there's a certain amount of uptime of the facility. There's a certain amount of maintenance that is, is ongoing. So that's all in our contract to make sure that, uh, the facility is up and running as it should. Um, as it relates to the potential, you know, we're talking about the, the, the lease today. Um, in, within the agreement that you would have seen last night, there is a bond in there, a decommissioning bond. So to, to limit any risk for the county in terms of if something happens in the future and you just want to return the, the, uh, the property back to its original format, there is a, a bond in there that would cover the, the removal of all of that. So that eliminates.
But the burden is on me, even though you have a bond that pays for it, the burden would be still on me to clean it up?
No, no. It, it would be our responsibility to clean it up. It's within our agreement with, uh, with Juice to, to, uh, to remove that and clean it up and return it back to its original format.
So do we have privety of contract between the two of you that can be referenced into our lease agreement?
Um, our PPA with SunGrid is confidential. But as far as contracting directly with Juice, we looked at that option. Um, but the most economic option for us was to sign an agreement with someone who's an expert in this. What we built into our agreement was, uh, in year seven and 10, we have the option to buy this facility out, all of the facilities. Um, and so we do plan to revisit that in, at year seven and year 10, uh, to determine whether we want to take ownership at that point and operate and maintain those facilities locally. Um, I don't know if there's a contractual way, uh, that Juice could be responsible for cleanup, um, if that could be some type of agreement between Juice and the county in conjunction with this agreement. Um, I mean, we're open to that because we know we have protections.
Does it make sense why I'm asking that?
Right. So we do have protections in our contract that, that holds, uh, SunGrid accountable, uh, for maintaining the facility, for maintaining a, a, a certain uptime and production, uh, during the life of that facility. So.
Just unfortunately, I'm not tied to your contract.
Right. I understand that. Yeah.
And that's the problem is, is, you know, we're wanting to help Juice out and hope and help local citizens, but we're doing a contract through somebody else. So it's kind of circumbitting, you know, if we had something just with Juice and we knew what, what the rules and, and all that is, then we'd feel a lot more comfortable up here versus going around to another company.
Yeah, I think the community would feel much better about us having goodwill with Juice as opposed to a private enterprise.
Is Juice contracting for a hundred percent of the energy?
Yes, the energy cannot be sold to any other utility because it's interconnected with our distribution system. So we're on the hook too.
Right. So y'all's board has already approved to buy all of the energy that's being provided. So that is of record that we could get, I guess, maybe?
Yes. That was, yes, it would have been improved in executive session, but we do have, you know, public information out that this, about the project that we're working on. It's just the particulars of that contract. Um, we may be able to provide a redacted version of it, um, that just, uh, you know, protects that, um, the confidential portions of it.
Does that help y'all with the, if they're buying a hundred percent of the energy out of it?
It helps, but contractually, if there's not a link that's tied into this agreement, it doesn't mean anything.
Yeah, we don't have anything to look at and reflect back to that this is the agreement and this is the benefit that Juice is going to get out of it.
I think where the, I think where the confusion is, is, is because the lease is with solar and I know we have a bond, but say solar goes out of business or we don't want to do business with you anymore. We have that bond in place to clean up, but still you're nowhere around to come clean that facility up. Now it has to fall on the county to go in there and get that done. Even though we have the bond, we have that, but we still have the headache of having to deal with.
Juice could probably indemnify us, potentially?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I think that would be a legal discussion on the best way to approach that.
Related to that question, uh, do y'all have the right to assign your, your interest in this to other companies?
So with, within the, within the agreement, um, there is the right to do that with the approval, um, of, of the county, uh, to related parties, but with the approval of the county, um, that's in the, the agreement. And if I can just, just maybe ask another question, just to make sure I understand the concern here. So the bond, the, the way that it's written in the contract, the bond, um, the, the bond amount would be determined by an independent, uh, third-party engineer to say, hey, this is the, the, the solar facility. To remove this solar facility, um, the cost to do so would cost X and we would secure a bond for that amount. And that, that amount, the third-party, um, estimate would include a, any third-party company to come in and remove the equipment and remove it quickly. So I'm just trying to understand what the, the concern is.
So the bond company would have to do that? We wouldn't be involved in it?
Yeah, exactly. And the, the bond company, we deal with bonds all the time. Um, the, the bond company, you know, it would be structured such that any construction company to come in and remove these, right? So if you're concerned that maybe we're not going to be around in 10 years, um, the nature of a bond and the reason why we get bonds and, and people request bonds is because it's, it's in an amount that's going to be sufficient to remove that facility and remove it in an expedited manner. So I think that that should alleviate any concerns around, you know?
The, the, the bond is a piece. I mean, it's a piece. It, that, that has nothing to do with that one leg of the stool for me. As you, as you know, communities are divided on this topic. And, and so as I, as I, as I speak with people in my area, it's 50/50, uh, you know, as you, as you look across the board. But the one thing that kept coming up, even those that were going, I don't, I, I'm okay, I'm okay, is they'd feel much more comfortable there if it was the, the local folks. So if anything went wrong, there's a local tie, you know, for fixing whatever the wrong might be. And, and the bond's just a, you know, at the end, you know, kind of, uh, you know, thing if that went wrong as well. Because at the end, Juice will still be here in 10 years or 20 years. Not saying you will or won't. You could reassign it to somebody else or whatever, or Juice takes it in seven to 10 years. And then I think that was one of, one of those things that if, if we're going to go do something and there is a benefit, we'd like to make sure that it's all local that are, that are, you know, engaged in some, in, in the event something goes wrong. That was, the, the bomb was just side comment.
Okay. No, certainly understand the concern and, and I just want to make sure we can address the concern. Um, we felt that we, uh, that that was addressed with the bond, but certainly, you know, we like to, to, to alleviate your, your concerns.
And probably from commissioner's standpoint who do bonds on, on roads, sometimes it still ends up costing us along the way, when we have our bonds that, that don't fix everything.
Yeah. The, the other thing that's important to note, when it comes to, uh, solar facilities, you know, the, the residual value of the equipment, so the steel on the ground, the, the aluminum in the, in the solar panel frames, um, all the copper wiring, there, there's a significant amount of value. And, uh, and so there is, you know, we would never just leave that equipment sitting on the ground. There's a lot of value there. Um, so, you know, there, yes, the, the, the bond will help to, um, protect all parties from a legal standpoint, um, but I just want to articulate that there is a lot of value there. And if it was determined that, you know, this, this facility is no longer going to operate, you know, there's, there's value to, to remove that equipment from the site.
Regarding the benefits, circling back a little bit, do, is there any kind of an estimation of a dollar amount benefit to Juice customers this would, this would generate?
Yes, we've done that analysis internally and that's really what our, our decision to move forward hinged on.
Is that the minimum that could be shared? It's confidential, okay. It's confidential, okay. And as far as credits unlocked for local industry, um, do we have a count of how many local industry would, would be impacted by this that would have additional credits that don't unlock that they don't already have, or how, how would that, how would we measure that?
So we've been approached by four different local employers that have, uh, interest in, um, ways to meet their, their corporate energy goals, uh, for, for their sites here in Greenville. And so we're working with each of those individually, um, and a portion of the project will be reserved, uh, for that purpose. Um, and the remaining would be offered to residential and small commercial customers who, who want that renewable energy option.
Would, would this, uh, location not make financial sense to y'all if y'all were paying market rate or something connected to a, a market rate lease for solar farms?
That would impact the ultimate price, yes.
Yeah, but would, would it make the project not feasible, or has that analysis been done?
Right, we would have to look at the rate. I mean, uh, you know, our goal was to start, uh, approaching entities that, you know, we could possibly, uh, partner with to get the low to no-cost lease rate. Um, otherwise, we would have just gone to private entities, but it drives the cost of the project up. Every dollar's a dollar we'll be passing on to our customers.
And, and the reason I ask is, you know, if we, if we have no way of knowing, uh, due to confidentiality or for whatever reason, what, what benefit would be derived, it leaves us flying, flying blind. Uh, of course, any, any benefit to be derived from this would be applicable only to Juice customers also. And this, this property is county-owned, which means that county-wide taxpayers have purchased this property. So I, it gives me heartburn that there would be, it would be difficult to point to a direct benefit to the rest of the, of the, of the county as well. There is, uh, tax, um, taxes being paid, granted, but we, as I alluded to earlier, have as a court not, uh, agreed to provide tax abatements to other solar farms that have come and asked for abatements and they were not building a floodplain or on property that we owned. Um, so it would be inconsistent with the policy. We've been recently allowing to guide our decisions, um, I think to provide a, an incentive in this instance. Um, and of course, I don't know that it sets a, what kind of precedent it'll set for us in the future if other solar farms are gonna come to us and try and contract with cities or municipal, you know, owned, um, companies.
Yeah, there, there are no other municipals in Hunt County.
Well, but if we're, if we're now saying it's okay to put solar farms in floodplains and we'll give you not an abatement, but an incentive by giving you land for free, some kind of incentive, uh, I'm sure that there are, there are companies who would look for ways to, to, uh, adopt that model elsewhere as well.
Well, name the property that Hunt County owns that's in a floodplain.
I'm not saying it would have to be exclusively on our property, but if we're going to give an incentive to one solar project-
Well, if we didn't own the property and we don't give incentives to solar, then we don't, it's, how's that an issue? Right now, our policy's been, we don't give incentives to solar.
Correct.
So if, if it's not on our property, then it doesn't affect us and we don't give any abatements to them. I don't understand your point.
On, on the subject of the property, it is, and I, and we tried to allude it-
I know on this property, but you said if other, if they came, other projects came in, how would we handle those? And you said, because if it's in a floodplain or whatever-
If they can go get a-
And we don't have, we don't, we don't have that situation.
How are we gonna tell them no if they come and ask us for an abatement in order to bring down the cost because they've got a contract with a municipality or a, a company like-
Yeah, I think that's an important distinction. Um, there, there won't be any other companies, uh, coming to request this of, of Hunt County because they have to have a prior agreement with, uh, with, with the municipality, so with, with Juice, and there won't be any other projects that Ju, that Juice is doing.
My, my point is it doesn't have to be on county-owned property. If we're, if we're, policy is we're going to provide an incentive if they are contracting directly with Juice or some other company. A city or municipality can arrange some sort of advantageous, uh, deal, uh, of this, of this general nature.
Well, Juice is one of the few municipalities in the state. There's not many cities that have their own.
But I think that's why-
Without, without the contract, without the, the power purchase, power purchase agreement, no, no company will, will come and request this of the county because you just don't have a, uh, an agreement to sell the electricity. So you need that agreement to sell the electricity before. So I, I don't think this is a, an issue where, uh, companies will come and, uh, request these, um, as you, as you mentioned, the, the, um, the same type of incentive because they don't have a, an agreement with the utility.
Most of the solar farms and battery projects, oh, they're selling to other people outside of our area. It's not coming to anybody in the county. So anytime we're-
Yeah, they would be for-profit and I think that's a big distinction as well-
Right, they're for-profit.
Is, we're, we're not, I mean, we're-
But our contract, our lease would be with a for-profit company.
I think that's why it's very important we talk about who we're contracting with. I think, uh, we need to evaluate, is there a different way where we're contracting with Juice?
So, uh-
Just off to that point, I guess I might be per from here, but the-
You, you can't online, Aaron.
We do have to get an, an ILA in place, I think it's-
Right.
Here's my emails, uh, to be in compliance with the competitive, uh, bidding requirements of the Purchasing Act. Since it is a private company, one of the exemptions that would, uh, that would have to apply, and this one will be the public purpose. And so like, as to the questions about the contract and, even though it's confidential, uh, whatever information we would have to, to get from that to confirm the public purpose. And as, as been mentioned, the public purpose is not just to lower the price of electricity, but also to get some compliance with some of these incentives that some of our, uh, large, uh, employers want. And so that's gonna be a, a piece of this anyway, is confirming that public purpose, uh, so that we can get an ILA between Greenville and, uh, and Juice in place that, you know, they're, they're a local entity, uh, whereas the LLC is not. And there has to be a public purpose for this to even happen. Uh, and so that will, to the extent, when we have to get some information, exactly what that'll be, was yet to be seen, but that would lay at least some of those fears partly.
So as we're working through some of these problems, would it be appropriate if we gave them permission, uh, to go on the property and start doing their engineering studies so that's can be done at the same time as we're trying to work out the other technicalities? If they chose to do that, if they wanted to go ahead that far and start looking at the land to make sure it even is what they, they want?
I'd have to confirm, confirm whether that's allowable or not. Uh, if, as far as it, it, the public purpose exemption has to be met for even to go that far.
Okay.
Uh, cause if you're not allowing other people to do, you know, take those same steps, uh, whether that's not a, a violation of the purchasing act.
So we can't take action on anything today then, really? If we don't have all the questions answered?
I mean, you could, you could do it all subject to an ILA and subject to the, the survey, but anything approved today would have to be totally subject to, you know, ILA being, uh, adopted at a later meeting and the survey being approved, to know exactly what property we're talking about.
Yeah, well, I, I really wanna take action on something. I, it seems like we have a lot of questions that the contract doesn't currently reflect. The, the words don't reflect some of the conversations we have.
Right. So you're saying it'd be hard to put a motion in?
Be hard to put a motion.
Yeah.
And always make it old business and bring it up again.
Well, we're, it's budget time, so we're meeting often, so we can probably do it next week. I mean, we'll probably have a meeting next week. We can do it at a special session, I assume.
Correct.
Yeah.
And, and I would be curious, and, and so while I do respect the, the confidentiality, uh, you know, lived, lived with a lot of that in, in life, uh, would, would Juice be interested or be willing, I know you have to go back and this be a question, but is it even a conversation that maybe, to Mark's question, maybe come to, to the executive session because it's confidential to you and present, is that not something we can do? Or is it they can, you know, something that they have privy?
You're saying we go to their executive session?
No, I was wondering if they could present to our executive session.
Excession, got you.
Cause it's competitiveness that you're, you're after, I'm sure, from a rate standpoint.
Right, it is, and, um, my understanding from my legal counsel is if I release anything that's protected under that Competitive Information Act, um, once I release it, I have to release it to everyone, uh, if it's requested. So, uh, that's, that, at least that's my understanding. But I'll go back, I'll talk with our attorney and, uh, you know, it, it seems like, uh, we could go in and redact that contract, um, so that you can see the portions of it that would be pertinent, um-
And Aaron might tell me that you can't do that in executive session anyway, just from a transparency perspective, but I was just curious if that, if there was a way to identify the benefit.
If it's redacted enough, would, and it would meet that, and it, it'd meet having it out here, then we could have it in a public meeting.
Well, and I think, you know-
As long as it's redacted.
There, there's a potential, uh, you know, I would think for a workaround in that inter-local agreement to address some of the concerns as well, um, could we not, um, work through some of these concerns through an inter-local agreement?
I mean, to, to the extent that which court would approve the inter-local agreement and designate it as a public purpose, uh, for the exemption of the, the information to say, yes, it's a public purpose is what we're trying to get at.
Okay. Um, and protections for the county? Uh, if, if Juice were, uh, ultimately responsible for removing any equipment, could that be added to the inter-local agreement?
Well, that would be changed into contract.
Yeah, it has to be tied to that piece of paper.
Okay.
I, I would not be comfortable agreeing to an agreement that's predicated on another agreement we don't have access to and the public doesn't have access to. That, that's a non-starter for me. I think it flies in the face of the principles of open government.
Well, I think the contract that we have with Sungrid is one piece of a larger puzzle. Um, this particular, uh, PPA for this facility, uh, would be two megawatts out of 10. And what we're paying per megawatt in our agreement, as far as what the uptime would be for this facility, the production rates, none of that is really relevant. Um, I, I, I don't see that that's relevant to a decision on the lease. I mean, Juice has done, uh, its due diligence, our board has voted in support of that. Um, and if the project were not beneficial to the community, we wouldn't be here.
But the community needs to be able to see that. That's, that's the gap we're missing. That's the gap we're missing.
Okay.
How do we prove benefit to the community that they're getting a benefit?
Well, I can't, I can't release the analysis that we performed to show that this would provide value. Um, I, I, I mean, I, I can't release that, that's confidential information.
And, and to be clear, I, I'm a happy Juice customer.
And I could release it, but it would probably be Greek because it's very illegal.
And that's why, I think if we, if we're able to flip where the relationship is, that the relationship is with Juice, as a, no, no offense, with Greenville Solar, I think at least that starts heading us down that path. Cause there's, but I, I, I get the points though.
Yeah, and, and I'm a happy Juice customer, uh, to be clear, y'all provide-
Sure.
-great service to me. I think you're, you're doing a great job. I think Jimmy and the whole team's doing, doing great work there, but we have accountability in our, our separate capacities and so there's different, different things that go along with that, with that accountability to, to people that put us here to, to represent them. So all contract stuff aside, and, and I, I raised this at our previous meeting, so it's, it's not new, but I still have concerns about putting a solar farm in that location with the amount of flooding that takes place, period. Uh, I think just even a couple days after we last met, we had a pretty, pretty routine June rainfall, uh, and even though I'd already been down there and told the court through multiple interruptions, that I'd been down there to, to see water lines and such, went down again, got pictures and videos, water up to my knees. That was a pretty normal June rain. Um, so there's a lot of water comes, that comes through there. I just don't think it's advisable to do it. Particularly, and separately, but related, on property that is purchased with the taxpayer dollars for the full county, I don't think it, it is, it is fair or right to the people in Celeste and Wolf City and Cattle Mills, uh, that we would do this, um, with, with their land, their dollars. So I, I don't think that, that's, that's a huge concern I, I haven't been able to, to get over.
Well, Mark, if it's all in floodplain, it has no value to anybody else. We can't put anything in there. There's no way to generate any revenue out of it because it is in a floodplain. So I don't understand your, I, I get your concern, I get your point, but I don't understand your presentation of it. I mean, it has no, it's not gonna hurt anybody in Celeste that we're not getting revenue off of a piece of property that we can't use for anything.
It, it can't be true it has no value if a private company is here, uh, asking us to lease it to them for $1.
I was saying, what, what other company's gonna lease it though? There, it's not like they're knocking our door down trying to say, let us please get on that land and use it. They can't because it's floodplain. So the chances of somebody else coming in here and wanting to lease it for a different purpose, I don't know what that would be. I don't know what company that would be, so-
Well, I'm not-
I mean, I, I get your concern that we're, that we're not getting all of the citizens of Hunt County getting a benefit out of it, but they're not gonna get, they're not getting a benefit of it ever anyway. So we're not damaging them.
No, I'd say a tax benefit.
Yeah, and we're getting tax increase on it, so-
That, that would be one benefit.
As far as a va, market value of anything, it's not.
Be, because we don't give abatements, we'd be receiving a taxpayer, the, the tax benefit anyway, so we're almost negotiating against ourselves here. Uh, it does not seem like good business practice. Uh, but back again, I'm, I'm opposed to putting a solar farm in a floodplain, uh, period. Um, so, uh, that's, that's my position.
Say that again, say that, say that again. Because we're getting tax money off of it, we're doing it against ourselves, what, what does that mean?
Said, if, if you want to put a solar farm, you should go through an RFP process and seek private companies to, to put a solar farm in down there. Uh, and at least do due diligence to see what value it might have.
Other, other companies, okay.
Other companies that would pay market rate for it, and that would be a benefit to the rest of the county. Now, full disclosure, I'm pretty skeptical, like I said, opposed, to putting a solar farm in that floodplain, uh, to, to begin with. Uh, because, among other reasons, we have, that, that property was purchased and we say that there's, there's nothing else we can use it for. We don't fully, truly know that because that property was purchased for another purpose and there's higher, much better suited land for building. It was purchased for building county, uh, buildings for inner, infrastructure, I'm, I'm sorry, um, my mind blanked, uh, for a justice center in the future. And until, we don't have plans in place for that, we don't know exactly what the requirements will be, what potential uses are for that low-line area. Is it likely we're gonna need it for something? Probably not. But that is the priority. And it's funny that, to me, not, not ha-ha, but it's, it's interesting that on the same day, we're approving an inter-local agreement with another county to place inmates in their jail, we're potentially entering into a 20-year with two optional five-year, uh, extensions, so 20-to-30-year lease to encumber a significant acreage of that property out there that is possibly for a future jail to meet our needs. I, I think it's just backwards. If we were to, in the future, decided that this, there was a benefit to, that we were comfortable with building solar farm down there, it would be appropriate to do it after the property has met its primary purpose, not before.
Well, we bought 60 acres in there, Mark, and of that, 12 or so is in the floodplain. And it's against the law to build in the floodplain, uh, building. So the jail can never go in there, we can't, I don't, I don't believe you can even put parking in a 100-year floodplain. So the land is not usable for the purpose that we bought the rest of the land for. We already have a site plan for a jail that, we may not build that exact jail, but we had a, a architect to lay out a jail site on that that was, uh, has been around ever since we bought the prop, before we bought the property. So it, it doesn't entail any of the floodplain.
But it's not built?
Well, it's not built, but, you know, I'd love to start it tomorrow. If you think we can go get a bond passed, I mean, 150 million bucks to build a jail, I don't think that, that's, that's gonna be able to be done. We gotta find a way to sell that.
I don't think putting a solar farm out there is gonna help that.
I don't think it's gonna hurt it, so let's let the public speak and then, and then we may come back, if that's okay?
Sure.
Dr. Andrew? Yeah, come on.
I'm a little slow, don't start my three minutes yet, please. Thank you all for allowing us to speak, and I just wanna thank you for your thoughtfulness and trying, I can tell from all the conversation that, can you hear me?
Yeah.
That you're really trying to think of all the issues. So I'm just gonna bring up, um, a perspective about what the river bottom is valuable. I don't know if you realize this, but the Sabine River bottom, the Sabine River and all the floodplain and that goes down to the Gulf is the largest freshwater river basin in the United States. It supports over 150 parks and, um, um, environmental areas and lakes, and this floodplain, this ecosystem is huge in our state. It's also one of the reasons that Hunt County is so viable in an, in an ecosystem and environment. So I'm just gonna read a letter that I wrote to you all. It's not very long, but if you would permit me to, it does- It's not very long, but if you would permit me to, it does hit some of the high points. Before, before I read the, the, the letter, I just want to say that I totally disagree with what they say, that the solar farm will not impact. That there needs to be an independent study, an independent survey of the environmental impact. And the biggest impact on the United States today, I don't know if you're aware of this, but is on our, not only our climate, but our food, is on the loss of insects. We have lost 85% of our insects in the United States and in the world, and the loss of our pollinators. If we do not protect that, we're not going to be looking at increased energy costs. We're going to be looking at food costs for the entire United States that's prohibitive. Bees are predominantly for that, as well as butterflies. Solar farms impact five miles in every direction to decimate pollinators. Five miles, not just their 12 acres. This is very, very important. So I'm going to start my letter, but I just wanted to sort of give to you all that this, and it's not just silicone, and, and there's electricity, and there's copper, and there's metal. And we just, we all sat here and prayed about what happened down in the Guadalupe area. To, to even think about putting a solar farm on a few panels in a river bottom, when we see this flooded every spring, I don't know, this is just kind of incomprehensible. I am very for clean energy. I'm for clean energy, solar energy and wind, but we need to put it on rooftops or brown areas or in areas of farmland that have either been destroyed or too expensive to renew or too expensive to use. And there's plenty of that. And as far as the companies that want to have e-systems or whatever, my goodness, we have the robot company and e-systems. There's plenty of rooftops that could be used, and those companies could put solar on their rooftops to, to power their companies. We, we, we need to think a little bit about it. When the Lord told the Israelites he was going to take them into Israel, he was going to give them what? A land flowing with milk and honey? And milk represented all the domestic animals and their environment for them, and honey? Where'd that come from? From bees, all their plants, all their food? So I'm going to read this now, and, and I just want to thank you again for being thoughtful. And it's, it's, it's the most incredible place we had. Do you know that the Hunt County was thought as the best because of the black land of the Sabine River? We were thought as the, we were the best cotton providers in the entire world at one time for years. Our land was thought to be the best land in the world, and primarily it's the Sabine River Bottom. So I'm going to read really fast, please, it's not too long. My name is Dr. Karen Andre. I'm a physician-surgeon and a longtime resident in Greenville since five years old. I'm writing to express serious concerns about the proposed involving Juice and a solar, or a solar energy company acting in conjunction with Juice. And I must say, there is another electric provider that, that I use, is Farmers Electric Co-op. And I haven't heard that they're involved in getting some of this dimension, too. I'm a Hunt County resident, and I'm proud of it.
They've already put these in, in Hunt County.
All right. But nevertheless, I think there's plenty of other ways we can do solar in our county and may keep our county a green county, so it's still Greenville and not going to be Brown and Paleville, you'll, you'll hear. I have not been able to identify this business and which fixed to use these tracts to do that, and in ecologically sensitive bottom land in the Sabine River for the development of this. Based on limited public information, it appears that the lease covers some tracts of land in the near Hudson Hill, and it's a very low lease for a dollar per acre for 20 years. And it, there's some legitimate questions about the management of taxpayer-owned natural resources for this. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm one-handed right now. This land almost lies entirely within a floodplain and contains some of Hunt County's last remaining native hardwood forest riparian ecosystems. It includes dark, rich soil, established creek beds, old growth trees, and a diversity of plant and animal species and river species that I don't know if you're aware of, but we have several endangered species in our area, in our Calhenge Fork, that, that, that if, when once cleared, graded, and overlaid with solar arrays, the damage would be permanent. As a healthcare professional, I see this not as an environmental issue alone, but healthy ecosystems are essential to clean water, food supply, and our long-term community resilience. I pose this land for these, these, these four areas, and I will summarize them to be quick. Sediment runoff and soil erosion. Removing trees and vegetation from sloped plains will lead to erosion and sediment flowing in creeks, and it will disrupt the ecosystems of the aquatic. The water quality will degrade, disturb soil and construction rated runoff, besides the five-mile round air change to insects and every other land, every other animal and plant and bird that migrates. Aquatic ecosystem disruption, I've already mentioned that, the sediment and contaminants will do that. Loss of pollinator and wildlife habitat, that's huge. It's the biggest thing we have here. Clearing this environment eliminates, or just putting that small little thing, as they say, essential habitat for bees and butterflies and other mammals and deer that will be under pressure from urbanization and pesticide exposure. You know, deer hunters could use that land. We could build a ecology training center. We could build a student training center. We have this incredible resource that's not very much, it's not in our whole state. And we need to be thinking green, and we could use that area for training. Deforestation and climate resilience loss. Removing mature trees, and they will be removed because the fungi that will be damaged by the change there, even from the solar electric, we will lose many forests. And that hardwood canopy loss reduces carbon sequestration and makes the region hotter, drier, and more vulnerable to future floodplain and drought. I do support, to be clear, I do support clean renewable energy such as solar when implemented in other, in good locations, appropriate locations, not the Sabine River Bottom, such as roofs. These, we have plenty of roofs. Everybody should have it. Brown fields or other, I've already said, disturbed areas. However, this fragile and ecologically and rare river bottom land is the very entirely the wrong place. Once the hardwood forest and then the underground mats are gone, the biodiversity and natural resilience will be gone, so too will be all of that that they support. Greenville could quickly shift from identity as a community rooted in natural beauty along that beautiful I-30 corridor we look out there. That's one of the few things we see that's beautiful, that we notice it's beautiful, to a barren and degraded landscape, a place some might come, great, come to be called Paleville or Brownville. Juice claims this project will result in cost savings for Greenville taxpayers, but no documentation or analysis has been provided to the public. If the public land is to be used for this, private infrastructure, the public deserves full transparency, and you have asked for that. Thank you for that. And it could potentially release all kinds of toxic things, not just silicone, to the Sabine River system. What are the contingencies, again, if you brought up, for cleanup, liability, or long-term monitoring? So I urge this court to delay or reject any vote or agreement until the public receives full access to financial data and, and the project documentation. And a comprehensible, comprehensive environmental impact study, not by them, not by the companies, is conducted independently by independent experts. Alternative, this is most important. Nonsensitive locations in Hunt County are thoroughly evaluated and presented for public input. I don't really like solar farms. I think they belong on rooftops. But this decision is not only about energy, it's about stewardship, it's about science, it's about legacy. We must not trade away one of the most fertile, diverse, and ecologically essential areas in our region for speculative and short-term promises that have yet to been documented or substantiated. Thank you so much for your service. I can tell all of you are thinking and caring, and I appreciate the time to, to speak to this.
Thank you. Charles?
How we doing?
Good, Charles.
First question I've got is, how big is Hunt County?
About 900 square miles.
Okay, and I heard 69 square miles was going to be taken care of out of this, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That's their service area.
Yes, sir. And so I'm just kind of seeing, because you're talking, representing all of Hunt County to represent 69 square miles is going to get service out of all of this.
Probably about 60% of the population.
Okay. Or the area, but it's not really that much of the area, though. Maybe the population, but not the area. Because you've got more people wanting to possibly come in and go down farther down the road if we never find enough water for people to come in that all want to do that. Okay?
Very well said.
The next question is, is our, has it been thought out? What little I'm listening to, right off the bat, the company that's building the solar panels gets paid upfront. Juice is going to be getting the subsidies as they buy the electricity. I heard the questions come up, who's going to be held accountable if something goes wrong? That, that needs to be addressed. Y'all have talked about that. But that scares me right there because it's kind of like driving down Highway 30. You can have a pothole and figure out how to try to get that fixed. It takes forever because the company that actually did it may not always be there anymore. They've already been paid. They're on down the road building another one, so you've got to go through somebody else, and what's the damage? And then the other thing that, as Karen or Dr. Andre has brought up, the ecosystem, all right? I was in the military for 30 years, and we brought in solar fans and we, or solar, and we bought in the windmills. If you go around any of those locations, you don't find wildlife. Five miles is a, a small estimate. If you go out and go to any of these ones, like on down on 34, if you're going down on whatever else, start, go out there and just take a walk around what happens out there. The pollinators are what you need. Over in this area, as you're aware, sir, because you lived in that area at one time, there's a lot of farms. There's a lot of people growing stuff. You take the pollinators out, it's done. It's not going to happen. And then the last thing is, is we need to get you guys out there when it floods. I'm right on the riverbed, just around the corner. Right now, my ground's dry. When it floods, I've got five-foot corner fences that I can't, I can take my boat out and go over the top of when it floods. That's a whole different ballgame than what you're probably thinking of what might come through there at two or three feet. So that impacts a lot of stuff as far as damage, cleanup, where you go. I really have to support Dr. Andre saying you need to do a study to look at this. If you're going to go forward, at least you've given me my day to speak. But please, look at the environmental impact. Look at how they're going to be held accountable. Who's actually going to, what's the right word I want to use for it? Profit from all of this. Is it the customer? Is it the builder? Who's actually going to win in all of this? That's the ultimate thing. It should be the people that live in Hunt County, and we need to take care of them. And I appreciate y'all giving me the, this opportunity to come up here. And I would also like to request that you maybe look at, not just having you guys, let's invite the public one night. It's kind of like when we did the tax thing, and we had that opportunity to all come in here. If we give them enough notice, give everybody the opportunity to come in here and talk to each one of you, and let you hear their stories that live along, along those areas, and see if it's really beneficial. Because I'll tell you what, you go to downtown New York City, how many, have y'all ever been to New York City? Or maybe downtown Houston, okay? Tell me how much wildlife you got out there. You start putting in all this stuff, you have no wildlife. You have nothing. That's what the beauty of this area is. That's why I retired here, because I liked the beauty here. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir. All right. Anybody else wish to speak about this?
John Kelso, 6005 Horn Drive, Greenville. I'm a Juice ratepayer. I'm a Hunt County taxpayer. Just talking about the stool. To me, I like the idea, let's say there's an environmental catastrophe. Okay, so the question is, who's responsible? Who are you going to sue, in other words, right? So I like the idea, honestly, of, if you're going to sue somebody, I'd rather you be suing Greenville Solar LLC than suing Juice. I don't like the idea of, of, I hear what all you've said, but if you're, if you're working closely with Juice, and, and you're going to be suing them if something goes wrong. That's what you're worried about, what goes wrong. I, I like the idea, I think it's to an advantage to have a third-party agreement rather than an agreement with Juice. Because I don't like the idea of you suing Juice, because like I said, that'll just make my rates go up. I'm concerned about my electric rate increasing. I like the idea of keeping my rates low. I think you're, you're, you keep overlooking the fact that who's it going to benefit? It really will benefit the whole county, Celeste, Wool City residents, because there's property value, tax revenue that you're getting from that property value. That might be something you could ask them that's not confidential, not proprietary, how much is that worth? What, when they're, when they have a build-out, full build-out, how much property value increase will generate tax revenue for every resident in Hunt County? I'm not sure, back to the stool, if you did have an agreement with Juice rather than Greenville Solar LLC, I don't know how much more information it will help you to make a decision. Whether you make it with the solar company or Juice, you're not really going to get much because it's all proprietary, you know, keeping your rate secret and, and confidential. So I, I don't know what the advantage to having it directly with Juice is really going to do you, to help you make a decision. I'm kind of rambling. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anybody else? All right. So...
Public comment.
Okay.
It'll be an email. It's from Shannon Manley, says, hello, I want to share concerns with the solar farm. The Juice representative stated they are working with four local businesses and that those businesses will receive electricity from the solar farm. When Juice was asked how many citizens would benefit from the solar farm, she said it was confidential. Doesn't seem that there would be much electricity left for citizens since this is a quite small farm. So one of many concern, or one, one of many questions that remain is just how will all citizens of Hunt County benefit? Why can't these businesses that want solar energy build it on their own property? What do the strong supporters of this receive as a benefit? Because it seems one person's a strong supporter, and I'm not sure that person receives Juice services at their residence either. So what are the benefits that make this worth the risk? For example, I live in precinct four, and do not receive Juice services, so this will not benefit me. However, the land was purchased with county tax dollars, which I contribute to by living in Hunt County. Please do more research, get an independent and unbiased reliable source to provide trustworthy information. Please don't just rely on the solar farm company's representative for all the information. Thank you.
All right. So we want to just move this to old business for, or we just need to table it totally and then, because we could have a special session if we get the new data before two weeks from now?
If you're going to set it to, for this specifically for an organization, you could pick that date, or just do it for the regular seventy-two hours for the next meeting.
Okay. So we, we can just table it then and not put it in old business for the next regular session, because we don't know when they'll be ready. If they get it ready, get us more information, we could call one next week sometime if we get 72 hours' notice so we can get it posted.
That'd be the best way.
So just table it for now?
I would recommend we have it on a regularly-called session. Just, the public's more accustomed to that schedule.
I guess the question is, is it fair for whatever conversations that need to take place, that is, that needs to be mined, instead it would be available in two weeks? Is that a reasonable?
Either way, I don't care.
Do what?
Go ahead and set it for next court, and that way people will have two weeks to plan on it.
All right. So we'll just put it in old business for the next regular session?
Yep.
Okay. Which we, the 22nd, July 22nd. All right. So we'll just put it in old business for the next regular session?
Yep.
Okay. Which we, the 22nd, July 22nd? All right. Action item number 11, request for permission to do work within the county right-of-way along County Road 1076 under normal stipulations in precinct one.
Make a motion to approve under normal stipulations?
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action number 12, the final plat of Wolf Creek Crossing in precinct one. Brian?
Okay, this is a pretty, pretty simple plat. It's got a few lots in it. We are waiting on the right-of-way to be completed and brought up to county spec, the escrow to be paid for the road improvement. So I'd recommend a conditional approval on getting the rest of those things squared away.
Okay. Any questions? Entertaining a motion for conditional approval for what items?
For right-of-way being brought up to county spec.
Yeah, okay.
And, do we have escrow?
That's, the road would be included in that right-of-way. So, they've got to widen the road six feet or so.
And escrow money, too?
They haven't paid for the escrow. So, they, we're waiting on the road to be paid for, and the right-of-way to be completed. Mark thought that it was probably 95% done, or pretty, pretty close to being done last time he was out there, so.
All right. So we need a motion to approve the final plat of Wolf Creek Crossing, precinct one, with the conditions that the right-of-way be cleared and the earnest money be put up for the road.
Correct.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item 13, the final plat of Weber Edition in precinct four.
Uh, meets all county requirements.
Entertaining a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you, guys.
Motion carries. Thank you, Brian. Aaron, we got anything for executive session?
Uh, yes, I'm sure.
So what item?
Going to one. Going under two.
One and two?
Judges, do we have the one under HR also?
It's the number one.
It's under one, okay.
All right. Entertaining a motion to go into executive session under items one and two?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. We're in executive session at 11:52.
We're going over there or standing here?
We're there.
Bobby, you don't want to talk about, um, they had to put some certain things on here.
Uh, I know, I'm worried back there.
Oh, never mind.
Hello?
Let me check my last.
We're live.
Yeah, we're back, back live.
We can do it in special.
All right, we're back in regular session at twelve twenty-five, you know, please. Mark, uh, we've been in there for a little bit today. We want to approve.
Yeah, motion, motion.
A motion to approve the non-traffic rainbowl.
Do you have a motion to approve?
Yeah, rainbowl and fire mill for the, uh. Rainbowl and fire mill and far and testing on the barn side of precinct two.
Need his motion or does so move?
I didn't take a motion for the rainbowl and fire mill to do, uh, fire mill testing at the barn side, uh, precinct.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, you okay?
Yes.
And mostly all the favors say aye.
Aye. Sorry, I didn't know what you were doing.
Motion carries. Is there anything else that we're for? Not like a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, and we're adjourned at twelve twenty-six.